I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 10th, 2017, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were some personnel items in the table file and a presentation.
Yes, so we have a number of personnel items in the table file. They include an appointment, some increases, decreases, and changes in assignment. There's a leave of absence, a grant request, some financial reports, and a narrative and some slides for this evening's PALS portion of the social-emotional learning curriculum presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. I'd like to remind the public that this is a listening opportunity for the board and not a time to debate an issue. Also, the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act prohibits comments about specific student matters even without naming the student in open session. This includes the public comment portion of our meeting. The board respects and values input on student matters, but when it relates to a specific student or a specific student matter, such input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. So, that being said, if there's anyone here who wishes to address the board, we ask that you step to the podium, identify yourself by giving your name and address, and if you represent a group. We ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, come forward, please.
Shane Brenney, 416 Third Street Northeast, Fairbault, Minnesota. I actually have two proposals, but I don't know if I can do that, so I'll just stick with one, I guess. I'm asking for all teachers and assistants to keep a logbook in the classroom on any behavioral incidents, so parents and office personnel can be informed at all times. If teachers have a logbook and write down any incident within 15 minutes of it occurring, this will be, this will help with relaying any important information to parents and staff while it's fresh in their mind. Parents should be contacted within 24 hours of the incident occurring by phone or email, not a week later. This way, issues can be resolved in a timely manner. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one additional come forth, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, March 27th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve these sets of minutes?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob, moved by Jeff. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, May, March 27th, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just want to go back. I believe that when we added items to the table file, I failed to say if there was no objection, we'd add these items to the agenda as we move forward.
I think you did.
Okay, I didn't recall saying it, so I just wanted to be sure that we were approving everything that was added. Okay, so we will move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
I have several this evening. First, Northfield Public Schools is a recipient of the 2017 Minnesota School Finance Award. The School Finance Award is awarded annually by the Minnesota Department of Education, Division of School Finance, to recognize schools for meeting statutory deadlines for submission and audited fiscal, financial data and reporting criteria. And this is that time of year where we thank Director of Finance Val Murstorff and her outstanding team, who just makes the ship run every day. And you know what? We always joke that no one notices finance when everything's going very well. So, this annual Minnesota Finance Award is kudos to Val and her department for their great work. This is the daily work, you know, that happens every day to make sure we've got the attention to detail and that things are quoted correctly and all the reporting happens. So, we're very thankful for the work that our finance department does and are pleased that they received this recognition from MDE.
Class.
You can't ask. Absolutely. The Middle School Youth Center was selected by Carlton College as its recipient of the 2017 President's Community Partner Award. In a letter about the award, the Minnesota Campus Compact shared their delight to join President Postkazner in recognizing the Middle School Youth Center's commitment to developing strong mutually beneficial partnership with the campus. Youth Development Coordinator Linda Oto attended the summit and awards ceremony at the University of St. Thomas on April 5th to receive the award. And again, the Middle School Youth Program, just another excellent program that we have supporting kids in their social-emotional development. So, really appreciate the work of Linda and the team over at the Middle School Youth Center. Last Friday, what's becoming more and more of a regular occurrence, it seems, we had a team of 16 educators from around the Appleton, Wisconsin area, who came to Northfield for a visit for the entire day, learning about our Torch Program. And so during the day, they got a chance to connect with students and with teachers and with administrators and have an opportunity to learn the history behind the Northfield Torch Program, how it continues to work, the expansion that it's had, and then had a chance to debrief about how they can go home and take what they learned. Of course, we've talked a number of times how programs are very difficult to replicate, but the fact is that they can go home and say, "How can we take this concept and make a difference for kids in our school districts?" They wanted to send 32, and Marnie Thompson said, "No, we just can't handle 32." So, 16 was the limit. But as we know, we've talked about our visits to Menominee Falls, and it's great to have people come to us to see the things that we are doing very well. And finally, on something else that I believe deserves a round of applause at the end, this is just announced, I believe this afternoon, I saw it tweeted, so we made sure we got into the announcements, that I'm very pleased to announce that Northfield High School Social Studies teacher Sarah Swan McDonald is one of 11 teachers from across the state that has been named finalists for the 2017 Minnesota Teacher of the Year Program. An independent selection panel of 23 leaders in the area of education, business, government, and nonprofits selected the finalists from a group of 37 semifinalists. And if you remember, there were 132 Teacher of the Year candidates for the program this year. The selection panel will meet again on May 6th to conduct individual interviews with each of the 11 finalists and to cast votes for the 2017 Minnesota Teacher of the Year. This year's honoree will be announced at a banquet at the Radisson Blue Mall of America on May 7th. Education Minnesota organizes and underwrites the Teacher of the Year Program, and candidates include pre-kindergarten through 12th grade teachers from public or private schools. And again, congratulations to Sarah Swan McDonald, being one of the top 11, is an outstanding honor. The second in a row we've had finalists. Outstanding.
That's amazing.
And I don't think there can be any other announcements past that. So, congratulations to Sarah.
Wow, good stuff. Board members, other comments? Okay. Amy?
Well, I don't, I can't top any of that, but I have recently attended two events that I wanted to mention because they were both excellent events. The first was the Red Yarn Dinner, put on by the HCI, and I forget all of the people involved, but it showcased a number of the high school students performing for the community. And it also, in a really wonderful fashion, got the community to come together and answer questions and connect the students to other community members. And so, that was a really wonderful event to attend. And the other one I wanted to mention was Beyond Words at Sibley. I sort of walked in there by myself, and I have to say, I was overwhelmed, in a good way, with everything that was happening there as far as celebrating arts in the community. And all of the Sibley community was their parents, kids, running around. You could really sense the, how the people loved their school and all of the creativity that goes on there.
Thank you. Good stuff. Okay. So, if there's any, not anything else further? Nope? Okay, good stuff. All right, so we will move on this evening for our item for discussion and report. We're doing the social-emotional learning curriculum, in which we have two presentations. To begin, will be Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Grace Hansen and our Northfield High School Psychologist Carrie Duba. They will follow up. Then there will be a PALS presentation by Bridgewater Principal Nancy Antoine and PALS Specialist at Sibley Pegway.
And Mrs. Pritchard, we also added Greenville Park Social Work, or PALS position, former social worker Melissa Larson was able to join us as well.
Excellent.
So, she is able to help with that presentation tonight as well.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for having us back to continue our discussion on the social-emotional learning curriculum. In your packet, it did explain what social-emotional learning is, recognizing emotion and learning to control it, excuse me, and what the classroom teachers would do. And it also pointed out how it aligns very well with our strategic plan, including our near-term priority, which just states right out in front that building and fostering relationships, commitment to social-emotional health for all. We had three curricula, as Carrie Duba explained to you the last time she was here, that we examined in close detail. We had presentations at Longfellow for the preschool program, at the three elementary schools and the middle school, as well as one open house in the evening for parents and any staff who would like to attend that. We had 10 responses from parents. We didn't ask them to rank the curricula, we just asked them for general comments. They were quite positive about the plan to implement a social-emotional curriculum in our district. We had 47 responses from teachers, and we asked them to rank them as to their first, second, and third choice of the three. And as you can see on the chart, Second Step got 39 of those as their first choice. So, it was overwhelmingly the first choice of the teachers. Following that, you can see how it's implemented in grades K through 8. And K through 5 has about 22 to 25 weekly lessons, and the middle school has slightly less, but they go for a longer period of time. So, to do that, the kids come, this is an example of a kindergarten lesson, the teacher would hold this up, this is, this is Tony, and he's disappointed. And on the back, it lists everything for the lesson that the teacher would go through. So, while we say, they like to say, "There's no prep." Well, obviously, there's some prep, but everything is right here. The teacher doesn't have to look for props or activities, it's all listed right on the back of the chart, of the picture. And each lesson comes with the picture and the information on the back. Turn this around, so you can take a closer look. Kindergarten and first grade also have the addition of the puppets. This is the puppy puppet, which is self-explanatory, I guess, and the becalm bunny and the snail puppet that comes with the kit that they use with the children to help explain the social-emotional concepts. The kits also include a binder for the teachers with all, this is a fifth grade binder, and it has all of the information in it. In addition, there are posters, and these posters are consistent, K through 5. And Carrie Duba will hold, she wanted to be Vanna. She'll hold some of them up. So, they are consistent, and as you go through the lesson, you can hang them in the classroom as reminders. Thank you. We do have some consistent district expectations that would be communicated to the teachers, that in the elementary schools, the K-5 classroom teachers would be the ones implementing and teaching this curriculum. In grades 6 through 8, the health and science teachers would take that on, and pre-K would do it in their hand-in-hand program. And Erin has indicated that pre-K would go along and order some of these for their classrooms, so this will be a pre-K 8 consistent curriculum. Lessons will be done weekly, and the curriculum will be implemented with fatality. Now, in, along with that, there are some room, there's room for some flexible decisions on the part of the teachers at the time of the day. In the elementary classrooms, we have responsive classroom, which starts with the morning meeting, and it would be feasible that one day a week, they would take that time to teach the social-emotional lesson. However, there is flexibility with that. If the teacher felt it would be a really good writing lesson, or it goes along with a social studies, or science, or health lesson, it could be moved to that time of day. So, the teachers would have the flexibility to implement it where it makes the most sense on the day of the week. It could be done any day of the week, so the teachers would have choice on that. And if there's a particular need or a particular area of interest that the students are displaying, teachers can feel free to add more material and expand the lessons. When we order this, they will do a webinar, a live webinar, with the teachers implementing it yet this spring. So, as soon as we can order it, we'll order it, get the materials here. The teachers will have a half-hour live webinar with the company. Then in the fall, during workshop, the Tuesday afternoon of workshop, the teachers will have some training time. There's minimum, actually, training time with this. They ask for about an hour to an hour and a half of online modules, and we would do like a two, two-and-a-half hours, so then the teachers would have that additional hour to look at the materials and talk about how they would implement it in their classroom. Then, for family information, at Ready, Set, Go Day in the elementary schools and at Open House at the middle school, we would have a table set up with some of the actual materials available for the parents to examine and to ask questions. And the cost, we were able to secure a grant from MDE for $25,000 to purchase curriculum. That doesn't quite cover the whole cost of the materials, but during our capital budget meeting, we also set aside some money to cover the cost of the curriculum. So, that's my portion of the presentation. If there are any questions or further comments?
Can I just make one clarification? The key thing is that the 6th through 8th grade, it's the health teachers that will implement the curriculum. In 6th grade, our health teachers also are, happen to be the science teachers. So, I just want to be very clear that it's the health teachers, grade 6 through, but the 6th grade teachers who will be teaching health also happen to teach science.
Thank you.
I believe I said science teachers. So, I just wanted, I didn't want to make anybody feel, feel that, oh, they're not teaching something that they had not planned on. So, thank you.
So, board members, questions coming. Amy?
I just have a detailed question.
Okay.
Does each teacher get their own packet of materials to work with?
Yes. We talked about that, and it's just as much more convenient, because again, if you do it all during morning meeting, everybody'd want the materials at that time. So, yes, each teacher will have their own packet.
That's what I was hoping you'd say.
Oh, well, good. I got the right answer. Plus, the posters can be then displayed in each classroom, and we, you know, you don't have to divide them up. So, yes, each teacher will get their own kit. And in the elementaries, they do have a principal kit available. So, the three elementary principals will also get a principal kit, and those things include letters to families and things like that that can go home. Also, up on the screen, you can see the Second Step, the, some of the, they have a wonderful website, so if you want to need more information, or if I'm not answering any of your questions clearly, this one will, this website will provide a lot of information for you. And each school will also have an extra kit for each grade level. So, the PALS position would have a kit that if they're running a small group, they would have access to the information too.
Board members, other questions? Ellen?
So, I had two questions. One, I couldn't remember if it's this package or if it was one of the other ones. You talked about having a table for family information, but was this the one that also has like a family newsletter component? Okay, great. And then my second question is not on this, but the, for the high school, will we hear later what, what we're thinking about rolling out for that?
Yeah, as we looked at this, the, when it became clear that Second Step was the choice, Second Step has a clear early learning through 8th grade component. My understanding, looking at Carrie right now, is that they're developing a high school module?
There is an upward extension of it.
So, there-
That is out there. The research has not been completed yet.
So, there is that piece, that the preferred curriculum overwhelmingly went through 8th grade. Then in addition, some of the other research that Carrie and Mary have done show that especially when you get to the high school, the best way to implement social-emotional learning is more of a, an integrated approach across the system. And actually, what our concept is, is to leverage what we have learned with the peer tutors for the, and as we move forward. Now, that takes a longer time to develop, because there's going to have to be some training developed for peer mediators or peer SEL coaches. It will be, need to be very intentional. We felt it was going to take longer than the time that we had. And what we know is that with that kind of program, it's essential that we do it right, as with everything, is that we do it right the first time. We just didn't feel we had the capacity to get that going for next year. The plan is to use next year as the planning year and to prepare the very specifics of how that peer academic coaching model could be extended to SEL, and how it can also be integrated with the current PBIS system at the high school. And so, that is the strategy that we're looking at, just taking an extra year to make sure that we have the appropriate program, the appropriate training, and making sure that we're trying, because Second Step is an evidence-based program. We want to make sure we use as much evidence when implementing a high school program as well.
Excellent. Other questions or comments? Margaret?
I'm looking at the cost, and I'm thinking this is probably a typo, where it says the cost is $46,521, and that we have a grant for $25,000, leaving us with a total investment of $46,521. Should that be a total investment of $11,521?
I think it would actually be $21. Basically, the total investment's going to be $46,521. That is a typo, thank you for catching it. The $25,000 grant covers some of the costs. We had originally set aside $45,000 of the capital budget-
Right.
-because we did not know about the grant at that point. So, you're correct.
So, I'm sorry, so $21,521 is our total investment?
That is correct.
Right.
Thank you for catching that, and I apologize for that oversight.
No, I thought it was me.
Jeff?
Where do you pick your curriculum from, and then based on, what other choices did you have?
Okay, well, CASL, and I'll have to refer to Carrie to find out what CASL stands for.
Collaborative for Academic and Social-Emotional Learning.
Okay. They reviewed 26 different curricula in the social-emotional area and gave them star ratings. And so, we looked at the ones that got five-star ratings. And then we looked at the ones that mainly would cover grades pre-K through 8 or pre-K through 12. And that came down to three, Second Step, Strong Kids, and Lion's Quest. So, those were the three that we reviewed more in depth and got samples from and spent some time on their websites.
Other questions, comments? Go.
Thank you for your presentation. I think this sounds like a really exciting thing to add to the curriculum.
Yeah, it should be good. Some of the teachers have been piloting it since the, it was pretty clear we were going to go with Second Step. And so, I think either Peg or Melissa would be able to answer any questions about how the teachers feel about it that have been using it since February.
So, I had a couple of questions and comments. First of all, I wanted to thank you, the team that came forward in February and really kind of gave us the background of the research, because we can really tell that this was very thoroughly researched, and it was great to see that the stakeholders had some share in the decision-making around the actual curriculum. So, you had alluded to how this, you envisioned this working with responsive classroom, and I'm getting the sense that it will be very seamless and an opportunity for, how will that exactly work within responsive classroom? There won't?
It, that's more up to the individual teacher.
Okay.
But you know how you start with a morning meeting and a letter to the class, and then instead of maybe the activity or the game for the day, you would do the social-emotional lesson.
Okay. And so, it was good to see, too, that you're doing some professional development as you, you know, towards the beginning of the year, and then you have already anticipated that you would have some additional training sessions or refresher-type things throughout.
Right.
So, you're anticipating, then, that that training will provide teachers what they need to feel comfortable?
Right. And Second Step does a wonderful job with things online. So, a lot of this will hopefully be like a PLC discussion with grade level, with saying, you know, "How did it go in your room, and what can we do differently?" There is a pre-test, if you will, with the word-choice of test, and a post-test, so we can evaluate how it's impacting the students, too. So, we're anxious to get that data going.
And then, just to piggyback on Ellen's comment, what will the parent portion of this look like?
I haven't really looked very closely at it, but there will be parent letters going home saying what, what concept they're working on.
Okay. All right, good. So, I guess I followed up the last question. Did you have some comments?
You just, you know, I think that what I'm really excited about here is for several years now, at nearly every stakeholder feedback meeting or survey that we've done, social-emotional learning has been one of the top themes that has been identified. And, you know, I absolutely understand for a number of years, as we've talked about this, that, you know, when you talk with folks on the street, sometimes people might say, "Well, this is, you know, really, we should, this is the kind of thing that should be, you know, taught at home," or those kinds of pieces. But what we are learning, and we've learned so much in the last several years, is the fact that so many of our stu-, I'm a big believer, you all know, in Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And if I don't have that core social-emotional components, it's very difficult for me to go up that pyramid to be able to grasp academic concepts. And so, I think many schools across the nation have determined that we have to take ownership for it. And so, I think that this is very exciting, because it is a piece that is directly related to our strategic plan, as Mary said, building relationships and social-emotional health for all. It's responding to a real, a tremendous amount, I think, as I was going to try to find a fancier word, but I'm not well-caffeinated anymore. So, there's quite, we've had quite a bit of feedback over the past several years about this being one of the biggest concerns of people within our school, whether it was parents taking, you know, part in thought exchange, or teachers as part of our strategic planning process last fall. And you saw all the data that has come back about how this is one of the top themes, and it made it into the strategic plan, one of only four near-term priorities. And we are going to have that curriculum ready to go next fall. I really appreciate the work that Mary and Carrie and Melissa Larson and the rest of the entire team did, because I think that, you know, while this is not as intensive instruction as, say, reading or mathematics, you know, in terms of those lessons every day, this has all of the things of what you want from a good selection process. It involved a variety of stakeholders. It looked at a number of evidence-based curriculum practices. There was an opportunity for parents to participate and share their thoughts about it. There's planned and intentional professional development moving forward, there's family connections, and there's the plan to be able to train new people as they come in, you know, to be able to make sure that we don't miss people. That's something this, we have not done very well, is that we do a lot, we do some good training, and then we don't always intentionally do that with new staff. We have a very clear plan in terms of how this can be integrated with our new teacher in service. And so, I think it has all the components that signify a good organizational decision. And so, I really appreciate Mary and Carrie and Melissa and everybody else, who, I don't even know who else participated, because there's a number of people who participated in reviewing and looking at the research and making sure we were selecting an evidence-based approach. So, I'm very excited about this, because I think it is the, it's a piece that we have a significant number of our students who need this, and it's, it's one of those things that, like we say when we talk about teaching and reading, if it's a good strategy for struggling readers, it's a good strategy for everybody. And so, if this is a good strategy for one part of our student population, it's a good strategy for everyone. So, I want to just thank everyone who participated in the process, and I'm going to use this to segue to the fact that we've been hearing about concerns about social-emotional learning for a number of years. This is not new to you. It didn't shock you that we're moving forward this or had heard about it through our surveying tools. Last spring, we asked you to implement what we have affectionately referred to as the PALS Specialist, or the Positive Attention Learning Specialist. And so, a year after you've adopted that, we should come back and share with you how that's gone. But it's also important for us to share with you how the PALS Specialist will also support the social-emotional learning curriculum. And so, what we have is we have three folks here tonight who are going to share some detail about, Peg Wood's going to start us off with what's a day in the life, you know, of a PALS Specialist. Melissa Larson's going to share her point of view from the PALS Specialist at Greenville Park. And then Nancy Antoine is going to share the elementary principal's perspective as we get into this. So, as I bring up the PowerPoint, I just want to highlight a couple of pieces. After you approved this particular, these positions last year, one of the first things that we did is the three elementary principals, myself, Mary Hansen, and Mary Grace Hansen, and Cheryl Hall got together, and what we determined is we said, "We need to make sure that we create a set of parameters for these positions," because what we want is, we want to make sure that there's enough consistency in how the jobs look, yet enough flexibility to work with the students who are in front of you. to work with the students who are in front of you. So we used a process that, that we stole from Dr. Bruce Miles, who you might remember, helped us with our strategic planning process, that set four parameters for the PALS positions that were going to be as consistent as they could. That was the goal, across each building. And what we determined was that the PALS positions were going to work with general education students. If you're a student who's identified as special education, we have a number of supports for you in place. And so it's not that the PALS can't help in an emergency or that kind of piece, but the PALS position, the PALS specialist focuses on general education students. They were going to become the point person for a behavior incident. And so the goal in this particular case at the beginning of the year was that when there was a substantial disruption in the classroom, rather than the principal being the first person, the PALS specialist was going to be the first person to the best of their ability on the scene to be able to make sure that they could capture some data around what was happening in that circumstance, if necessary, remove that student from the classroom, work with the student, and then get the student back into the classroom as quickly as possible so that learning can continue to develop. So that was, they're going to be the point person on the behavior incident. They were going to be responsible for coaching and professional development. As you know, we've been seeing more and more behavior issues with younger and younger children, so making sure that our staff felt that they have a resource that they can go to, much like our RTI coaches or the instructional coaches that we have at each elementary building for reading and mathematics. The goal of this was to replicate that to the best of our ability in terms of the PALS specialist. And finally, they were also going to be the point person on the behavior screening. So the data collection, the analysis, and working with the SST team, the Student Support Team at each building, to be able to do that. And this is all built on a foundation of relationships and visibility. If you go to any of our schools in the morning, some of the people you will see first in our elementary schools are our PALS specialists, because they're out in the hallway, they're greeting parents, they're greeting kids as they, as they get off the bus or come into the building, because building those relationships was essential for them to begin with. So I just wanted to share that with you a little bit, and as the presentations go forward, I know that they're going to share some of the data that they've talked about this year. One of the things we talked about last spring was how would we measure this? And at the time, we said, this is a challenging piece to determine how we are going to measure its effectiveness. We had some ideas at the time, and what the PALS specialists have done through the year is they have looked at a variety of different pieces of data in what we're calling a baseline year, to try to determine what are the things that can best measure the effectiveness moving forward? Because what's effective with one student in one school may not be effective with another student in another school. So we are learning about what are the pieces of data that we can track and try to utilize to determine and gauge our success. You'll hear some of those bits of data through, and then you'll also see in the narrative that was included in our table file, I just also want to point out that the PALS specialists are also a PLC, and they have, just like every other PLC, they have a SMART goal for the year, and you're going to like it, because I know it's one of the things that you have appreciated, that you've heard in some of the school improvement plans. So with that frame, we want to welcome Peg Witt to this, to the microphone, and we look forward to hearing from her.
Well, thank you. Scott Senat had asked me to speak briefly about a typical day, you know, what day for a PALS person would be, and so I've divided it into three parts, so that before, during, and after the school day. And so a typical day before school, availability is essential for me to check in with teachers to discuss student initial behavior concerns or progress on previously identified students. That's also a time that I plan on helping staff development, including grade-level PLC groups, where we've discussed various topics this year, including best teaching practices with students that, with ADHD, common language and behavioral expectations between specialists and classroom settings, common accommodations in the classroom and specialists related to 504 plans, sessions on the power of praise, the social-emotional learning curricula choices, and I also plan the connectedness and building climate activity for our monthly staff meeting. I'm also part of the responsive classroom team, and our focus this year was creating a monthly video which was pushed out to classrooms, presenting that CARES principles of cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. And we also plan a quarterly, school-wide celebration and meeting. As Matt had said, I'm part of the SST team, our Student Support Team. We meet each Tuesday morning, and we work together to determine strategies and a behavioral intervention for a student-specific need. And as the day goes along, I meet with small groups of students in which teachers have identified as benefiting from additional lessons and activities in self-regulation, anxieties, friendship skills, focus and attention, and building connections. And these groups might meet for eight to ten weeks, and they've occurred at the kindergarten, first, second, and fifth grade levels, with about forty-six students participating this year thus far. I also have done some weekly whole-class classroom lessons that I've offered to classroom teachers with participation at all grade levels for specific areas of concern, again, in friendship skills, or sort of the sequential lessons, including empathy, impulse control, and anger management. And I believe that this has set the stage and grown the awareness and readiness for the social-emotional learning adoption for the district for next year. And I'm charting and collecting data on individual students, on it as a daily check-in time with approximately ten students at this time, and that has fluctuated as the year has gone on. I currently have over, a little over two-hundred different behavioral incidents that have been entered in the school-wide information system. And from those incidents, there have been about seventy-one think-and-fix-it plans that have been completed by my, with students. And if I talk with any student, and in my office, I always contact parents by phone or email to let them know that that event has happened. We continue to model, notice, and raise awareness to that, with that four-to-one praise-to-reprimand goal throughout the building by dropping into classrooms and informally visiting throughout the day. As Matt had mentioned, my PALS colleagues and I try to communicate weekly with each other. I'm responsible for writing and updating 504 plans. Currently, there are eight students under my watch as a four, under a 504 plan. I also have daily lunchroom supervision as well. And then after-school is a really great time to meet with and, and connect with teachers. It's a good time to debrief on things. It's my time to kind of prepare for those classroom lessons and my small group meeting. And a really critical part of this year has been working with Noreen Cooney, our school's social worker. We communicate daily and throughout the day, and she is a wealth of insight and information for me, and I recognize that she has a different skill set, and I, without hesitation, go to her to get her input on, on various things, as well as checking in with Scott and communicating with him and updating him on student concerns and, and needs as well. So that's, that's my day. Thank you.
Now, we're going to have Melissa come and talk just a little bit. She's got some interesting data about how her time has been divided as the PALS position.
So I tried to quantify some of the things I do, and on a daily basis, I try as much as I can to kind of do a log. It doesn't always happen, but some of the numbers that I was able to come up with. So I have documented over this school year, so far, two-hundred-and-fifty documented visits. And looking at the data myself, I realized that I probably don't put as much of the teacher contact or coaching pieces that I do, because, as Peg kind of said, it happens before school almost every day with several different teachers, or after-school, or during the day, and so I probably don't stop. And that would be a goal of mine for next year in this position, is to try to quantify that data a little bit more. So some of my time is spent doing classroom and student observations. I'm a part of our student assistance team when there are some crisis events or teachers wanting some extra support with a student in their classroom, addressing student behaviors too, so working with teachers and students to figure out kind of what occurred with the behavior, what might be some logical consequences, helping support teachers in doing those consequences by taking part of their classroom time or supervision pieces, and then parent contact is about fifteen percent. That should say intervention support. So twelve percent has been helping actually in the classrooms with teachers, doing the interventions, whether it's been modeling some of the interventions for teachers, or helping implement certain plans that they need just some extra assistance with, too. And then ten percent has just been providing some student support pieces, too. So if they're having some emotional concerns or problems that's, or affecting their behaviors in their classroom, or their ability to access their academics, too, there may be some of that conferencing and pieces, too. So when I went back to try to figure out what students, I had it look like there's about seventy students that I've had direct contact with. I am in classrooms all day long, and I actually, every morning, I'm the bus greeter. So I would probably say that I would have ninety percent of the students probably have had contact with me at least once this year, if not multiple times this year as well, too. So. The other things I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that I've done, too, as well, is professional development was mentioned as one of the things that we are supposed to be doing as well. And I've been able to offer four different professional development opportunities this school year. The four-to-one positive praise-to-reprimand ratio was an in-service we did. I've also done in-services on logical consequences and kind of looking at different behaviors we see, and what would be some of the logical consequences that could be implemented to help those students learn from those misbehaviors. And social conferencing, or the problem-solving conference, was the most recent in-service. We just had that last week, to kind of look at, how do we build those relationships? How do we work together with students to do problem-solving, and coming up with a mutual agreement of how we're going to move forth, and some of the things that teachers can change, or that students can change as well, too, so that we're working collaboratively together and cooperatively in our classrooms as well, too. And then the final one, I actually brought in a speaker, Lisa Erwin, and she is working with an agency that's working on the adverse childhood experiences, the ACEs study, if some people have heard that. And she came and presented that information to our staff, just kind of as a brief kind of overview of, of how those adverse childhood experiences could be affecting students in their classrooms. We didn't really dive into kind of what to do about it, but just that awareness piece of, these are things that our children are facing. Yeah, I think that's all I wanted to share, so.
And now we'll have Mrs. Antoine, who will share a little bit about how PALS has impacted her as a building principal, and she has a chart that she will show you in terms of elementary fix-it-plan comparison over the past several years.
So as you can see, this is, this is how our fix-it-plans have gone. Obviously, from in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we had about two-hundred-and-twelve fix-it-plans, going down to one-thirty-eight the next year, up to one-ninety-four the next, to one-fifty-four the next, and this year, forty-seven. That, that, it's not, it's not magical, but it works. Again, what I, what I would like to reiterate, that the two previous presenters have said is it's about relationships and building relationships with students. It isn't about letting students get by with things. You still hold them accountable, but it's offering that other layer of support. With Adam Danielson, who is our behavior specialist this year in this position, and I tell you, it has been just amazing. You, you see it every single morning when we're out in the hallways greeting the kids. The kids know who Mr. D is, and it's really fun to see, I mean, they squeal with delight just to get to see him. And, and one of the things that we've done in terms of our character traits is we have a character trait of the month, like we've normally done before, but now what he has, what he's done, he's got a little bucket in the office, and if our, for example, our character trait of the month this month is perseverance. And so students, teachers who see students who are displaying those character traits, they give them a little slip that has, that has a place for their name, their teacher's name, and then there's a bucket in the office, they go put their, their slip in the bucket. At the end of the month, he draws out, I believe he draws out twelve students out of that bucket, and then he has lunch with them. It's a matter of they go get their lunch, they bring it to the table, and again, talk about excited kids, "I get to eat lunch with Mr. D today." And it's like, it is, it's really very heartwarming, but they understand that there's a relationship between their behavior and why they're getting to have lunch with him. So that part's huge. The pieces that, that I would see, say that he's taking, that he's taken over this year with the 504 plans, but also in terms of our, our student support team, working on the behavior interventions, going into the classrooms and helping the teachers establish those behavior interventions, also helping them track the interventions, and then that, I would say, that frequent check-in with the teacher to find out, how is this student doing? Are they, are they still making it, or do we need to tweak that intervention and try something, try a different angle with, with that student? We've also had a few students in crisis this year that have been put into foster care or other incidents, and he's been the one to touch base with those students, making sure that they are supported, because that's, that doesn't always take place. One of the things that I've found that, that's been very valuable is taking a look at the students and their behaviors and asking the question, why? Why is a child misbehaving? I mean, it usually isn't because the student chooses to behave that way. What we're, what we're finding is we've got more and more students who are coming to school sleep-deprived. And that can mask a lot of things. It can look like ADHD, it can look like EBD, for, for example. But when you, when you understand that if that child is overtired, they're not going to be able to, to behave like the rest of the class and like the teacher would prefer that they do. So recognizing that, and, you know, sometimes we have to give, we have got to give children's naps, because they need to sleep. If they've been up all night long, they're not, they're not going to be the best they can be at learning, so we allow that to take place. Adam does do many parent contacts, following up with teachers and with students, and I would say his morning time and his afternoon time, the beginning of the school day when the kids come in, the end of the, end of the day when the kids are, are being dismissed out to either kid ventures or to the pickup lane, he's always making connections with those students over and over again. Interventions is a big part of what he does. Another piece that I'd like to mention that, that hadn't, I hadn't even thought about it before, but he said, you know, I've been meeting a lot with my kindergarten, my kindergarten listening groups, and, and I thought about it, it's like, wow, that's putting, putting a lot of your payment at the, at the front end, working hard with our kindergarteners so that we establish some of the criteria for behaviors that we hopefully won't see at the back end. I think that's really, really valuable, and I think it's really a wise use of his time to, to spend the time in those, in those kindergarten rooms, again, getting to know the students, building those relationships with the students, so that when you do have to hold them accountable, you have, you've got a bank to go from. You're not starting from, from ground zero with them. But also, they understand, this is what, this is what Mr. D expects, this is what my classroom teacher expects. They go hand-in-hand together, so this isn't like something foreign thought to them. Looking forward to the social-emotional curriculum for next year. I think that Mr. Danielson will do a great job leading the cause on that. He's done a great job in leading some of our professional development, especially in the, in the area of student behaviors. And again, that reminder of that praise-to-reprimand, it has to be four-to-one, otherwise it's, it's damaging, and we can't do that. So I'm really looking forward to that. What has this meant for myself and the other building principals? It, it means that we get to spend a lot more time on our instructional leadership. I find that I have much more time to spend in classrooms talking about instruction, really digging deeper into it, not just being able to do a drive-by or just a walk-through. I get to stay for a longer period of time in a classroom to watch what's going on, and again, having that conversation with the teachers later on. So this has allowed me that time to, to get that piece of what I really need to get done in terms of the teacher, teacher development evaluation program. So I thoroughly appreciate this opportunity to present, but I also want to thank you for, for the wisdom that you all had in allowing this to happen, because this is, I think this is great for kids, it's wonderful for teachers, and it has brought, I would say, some sanity into, into my life, but also allowing me to do the things that I need to do as well. Instructional leadership is a huge piece of my job, and I'm really happy to be able to have the opportunity to do that. Any questions for any of the three of us?
Oh, wow. Excellent presentation. Board members, questions, comments? Ellen?
So I just, I just had a comment, thinking about what these daily, what did, how did your, a typical day? And what really struck me in hearing about all of them was that your day, what you plan for the day may just change completely, and how dynamic you have to be in that role. And it was just amazing to hear what those typical days were like. And what I was really struck by was before we had this position, and, you know, we have our instructional staff and our principals who have, you know, you need to get through state standards at certain points in time, you need to manage the building at certain points in time, and these things would come up. And you could only do so much. And now we have someone who, that's their job, it's like, okay, my day's a little different, and I go after it. And I just, I just really, really pleased with this presentation and hearing, and excited about next year with the social-emotional curriculum. So thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Other comments?
I just had a question about logistics. I mean, with the typical day, are you like on call the, the whole time? Do you have a lunch period? And if you're having your lunch, someone comes in and says, "I have a crisis," and, or are there?
Yeah, kinda.
Come to the microphone, Peg.
I would say, for myself, coming out of the classroom, I, I often spend time right at my desk eating my lunch, you know, dealing with other things. So I always feel if a student, as Matt had said, you want them there, you want to work through things, and then you want them back in the classroom. So I don't feel right saying, you need to wait, you know? So every, every day is different. Every day is different with that, so.
Crisis doesn't wait.
Yeah.
And I would say the same thing, too. I don't know what the lounge looks like some weeks, but it really is meeting what the students' needs are and the teachers' needs, and really supporting those efforts when needed. And it's fine that I can eat at my desk, and sometimes having lunch with the kids actually helps things as well, too. It gives them kind of that, a different level of experience with us, too. So, relationship building.
Other questions or comments?
Margaret? I think this was great. I mean, it's all wonderful. It seems like common sense, but I love that we're there. And I'm sorry that we had a crisis come before it, but I love that we have reacted positively to the crisis. I'm assuming that Greenville and Sibley are seeing the same results that Bridgewater is seeing, where a lower, maybe a lower incident fix-it-plan as a measure. Is that?
You know, Margaret, the key thing is that not every building had kept data in a similar way before.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is the measures.
So what's hard to say is that, in fact, we've even learned that with the Swiss data collection system. I think it's really a fair way to say it, in the fact that we, actually, we've just been reviewing, Chris Nessett, our student information systems specialist and I, Chris needs to do the, what's called the civil rights data collection system, I think that that's the name. And as we go through some of the behavioral data that needs to be, one of our goals for next year is to work with all of our buildings about calling the same kinds of incidents the same thing. So one of the things is why in the narrative, I revert to it a couple of times, the baseline here, is because we did not necessarily really look at behavior systematically before. There was a systems approach, but we didn't look at it. One of the benefits of this position is it has forced us to look at this systematically. And so we are getting a better data collection system moving forward. For, I know what other buildings who have done PBIS in the past would say is that's the first step, is making sure that we're collecting data in similar ways. So while I think it's fair to say that there have been some reductions in some areas, you could also potentially, in fact, many PBIS schools in their first year see an increase. And the reason is because people are now calling things the same. And so there's a process to getting your data cleansed, is the term, to make sure that we're all calling incident A, incident A, and not incident A in one school and a blue incident in another school, and you know, this and that. So that's been one of the first things. And that's what happens when you're forced to, as a former building principal, that's what happens when you're forced to react to those kinds of, as a force to being proactive, which is what we're doing out. You have three veteran staff members who took on this role and have done a marvelous job this year, using their experience to support their fellow teachers by being able to address needs as they occur, using it as a teachable moment, and then getting kids right back to learning. So I think that's one of the key things this year, Margaret, is that we are taking a look at that data and saying, "Okay, what's the best way to be able to count that across the system?"
Yeah, I was just wondering if the other two, with the measurements you're using in your building, are you seeing a positive reaction?
Well, I...
What's been the results, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I think our results are forming, yeah. I mean, I don't know, because I don't have that from last year, but, so I guess we will see this as our year that we're learning.
And I guess I would say for Greenville, we maybe aren't seeing the reduction, but I think it's because I'm there, making sure that we're documenting it as well, too. So I think if you looked at our data, you would see an increase, but it's because we're making sure we are getting that data collected, and there's someone supporting the efforts of making sure that we're following up, that we're doing the parent contact.
So you're working on the baseline, is what you're doing?
Right, the baseline piece of it, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Whereas I would say, we were actually tabulating that before, so we were recording those numbers beforehand, so that's why we have these to share today. But I think, I would say the difference is that there's somebody who is following up on every single fix-it-plan, whereas I would record it last year, but follow up with each individual student, there is no way that I would have time to do that.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Amy?
I'm just curious about the parent contact piece and how, what the standard for that is and how that either goes out, whether it's the teacher or the PALS person that contacts the parents, and what level does the incident have to be at to require parent contact?
Well, I'd say the lines are blurred there quite a bit, and it really depends if that, for example, if it's a bus issue, Adam will contact the parent. If it's something that happened in the classroom, the teacher will contact the parent. If we're talking about a behavior intervention, then Adam will contact the parent. Bottom line is usually a conversation happens between Adam and the teacher, and they decide who's going to contact the parent. There's never a time when the parent isn't contacted, the parent is always contacted.
At Greenville Park today, we just had a meeting with our behavior EA and our PALS, Melissa and myself, to follow up on incidents from last week, making sure that a parent contact had been made and that it didn't slip through the cracks. And so we do have regular meetings to make sure that that happens, and now, "Did you contact the parent? Should I?" or whatever, so that we're sure that the parent has been contacted.
That's very important to me. You can't expect the behavior of children to change if the parent doesn't know about it. And parents can only help with things they know about, so therefore, it costs nothing to pick up the phone. It may cost a lot if you don't.
Other questions or comments?
I had a couple of questions. First of all, Matt, you kind of alluded to it, but I definitely wanted to touch on it again and just thank Peg and Melissa and Adam for stepping forward and taking on this position. And I think that what we heard today really exceeded my expectations for where we thought we would be at this point in time. So excellent work. You guys are, you know, you're all clearly passionate about what you're doing, and we're so fortunate that you took on this role. And we are truly grateful for the work you're doing, and we get that, you know, it really is work in progress, and you're learning along the way. And so having established some of the programs that you've done within PALS, the CARES and the Assembly and the four-to-one praise to reprimand, do you envision that working seamlessly with Second Step? Will there be some sort of modification in terms of maybe more common language that's a part of that curriculum, or how will this sort of mesh together?
I guess I would say, I think there's going to be a lot of commonalities, especially developing that common language, I think is crucial.
I would say the same thing, that the various units of study in Second Step are called, you know, there's a section on empathy, there's a section on emotional, you know, handling your emotions, anger management, all of those things. So really, it should be, they complement each other. It should be just really seamless. And again, that common language, so that those posters are hung, like in the gym, they're in the music room, we're all, we're saying, you know, delivering the same message.
Excellent, okay. Melissa?
I guess, just to kind of also say what they said as well, but what's exciting for me the most part is the core instruction, that all of our students are going to have that. I mean, when we look at core instruction in math and in reading, you can build on that. And so now I finally have something that I will be able to build on, that I know every student that comes in to meet with me has these core skills, this foundation. I can help them work through the problem-solving piece. We can remind, you know, what are the ways, what are the steps you learned of ways to play fair? So I'm really excited, and I really think this will align, and we'll probably see even more growth in our students in this area because of our support as PALS, but also this core curriculum being offered.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you. Yes, Dr. Hillman?
Just, I have a couple of wrap-up comments. First of all, many of you know that I spend quite a bit of time in buildings, and as I'm listening to the presentation tonight, I can clearly think of circumstances where I have personally witnessed the PALS doing their work. I recall one day about, probably about two months ago, where I'm walking down the hall with Mr. Danielson, and he says, "I'll catch up with you a little bit." And he stopped in a room, and shortly thereafter, he and a small child came out, and as I was moving through the building, I saw Mr. Danielson basically taking a lap with this student and checked in with him afterwards, and yep, they notice a pattern, and so there's a proactive intervention, that if we can get this child out and get some, a little bit of a motor brake, so to speak, that the child re-enters the room, and that helps prevent the behavior. There's an example of how we're using an evidence-based approach by trying to seek out what is the antecedent. If we have a child who is not able to read at grade level, we immediately go to what are the foundational skills that they need? Is it phonemic awareness? Is it segmentation? Is it fluent? What is the piece that we need to work on? And what the PALS I have witnessed doing, and I see Peg doing this, in fact, if you know what Sibley, you know how they have the, are supposed to be the lockers out in the hallway, there's the hooks, and there's the small, I cannot tell you how many times I've seen Peg during my walkthroughs at Sibley this year, sitting on those benches with a small child next to her, you know, hunched down at eye level so that there was a real conversation happening, and I'm not able to hear it, but I've been around the block enough to know, I know what's happening, which is we have some very proactive and some intentional instruction, and then that student's right back in the room. Just last week, as I'm at Greenville Park, I'm walking through the media center, and Ms. Larson's coming through, and she stops, "Hey, Dr. Hillman, do you have a moment for my friend to tell you what we just learned?" And I don't recall exactly the skill right now, but the student was very proud to tell me what they had just talked about. Those are just three examples of the day-to-day kind of piece. And again, this is not anymore just, "Well, what do we think is happening?" We are actually getting to the root of the antecedent of the behavior, because Mrs. Antoine mentioned, sleep. You know, I try to get at least seven hours of sleep every night, because I'm not very good if I don't have that much. So they've gotten to the point of what is the antecedent, and that is so important, because if we can figure that out, we can support the student. And if we can support the student's barrier, we are then able to help them progress academically. If we don't have this stuff taken care of, our job to progress kids academically, it's not impossible, because we do it all the time, but it's much, much, much more difficult. And so those are just three pieces that I wanted to share in terms of that. The coaching that has happened and the connection moving forward to the social-emotional learning curriculum is just outstanding. And I really see it as, back when we talked about the RTI coaches, about providing that tier-two service, if you think about the multi-tiered systems of support, our PALS specialists are people who are not only supporting the tier-one, right, by helping teachers who need some assistance and looking at the Second Step curriculum and effectively delivering it, but also by providing some of that tier-two support. Our end game is to try to make sure we address these kinds of behavior concerns before they become a special education situation. And so special education can serve kids who truly have a disability, but what we know, as we know in reading and mathematics and the other things that we've done, continuing to work on those tier-two interventions can help students develop the skills so that they do not qualify for special education, because we're able to handle that in the regular ed curriculum. Finally, if you think about all, this might be a stretch, but work with me for a minute. If you think about all of the stuff that we've heard about career in college writing, right, and recent articles about, again, top HR managers and Fortune magazine talking about the top skills that people need are empathy, the ability to collaborate, and the things that we just heard are part of the Second Step curriculum are the things that the managers of the top 100 Fortune companies are saying are the skills that kids need. So employers are demanding us to do this as well, and you hope that the things that we work on in kindergarten and first grade and those things build that foundation as we move forward. I'm also excited to say that Clayton Cook, Dr. Clayton Cook at the University of Minnesota is one of the nation's preeminent researchers in social-emotional learning and how it impacts education. And I'm really pleased to share with you that we have secured him to come and speak to our staff in August as part of our opening session. And so we're still working out some logistics, but I'm really excited because he is very passionate. I think our staff are going to really enjoy hearing from him for a short time about his research, about how critical social-emotional learning instruction is to the overall academic progress of kids. So this has obviously been a passion of ours over the past few years, and I just, again, we are so thrilled that we're at this point. Carrie said before, we're pretty excited, and we are. So thanks to everyone for their work in getting this together. Thanks for the staff members who have brought this forward, and numerous pieces of the parents who have come and talked with us, and it's very good for kids that we're at this point. So thanks, great presentation, everyone. Nice job.
Excellent, thank you so very much. Excellent presentation, and I think we are all very excited. So thank you very much. So that takes care of, let's see, I believe that is our only item for discussion and report. So we will move on to item for individual action, which is the laptop computer lease agreement. We had the initial presentation at our board meeting two weeks ago, but here again is Director of Technology Services, Kim Briskie. Kim, did you want to intro a little bit, and then we'll go with the motion?
Yeah, I don't think we probably need to go through the whole presentation. You can see in your packet, you have the same presentation from the last meeting. And so actually, if we go back even two meetings ago, we go back to the financial piece with the capital budget, where we, as part of Val's update, discussed that our capital allocations committee had approved up to $150,000 in a four-year lease agreement for staff laptops. And then I came and presented this presentation to you. I'm going to skip down, I think the same things are true about why this year is different, the same things are true about why we are going in this direction with MacBook Pros. If we go to this slide, the sixth slide, it looks like, you can see a couple of changes actually here. I went too far. The only changes that I'm going to bring tonight are about the actual dollar amount and what comes in the lease. And so we had talked about that $150,000 mark, we talked about going with MacBook Pros for a variety of reasons. You can see, I did a little strike through that extended warranty. I've maybe gone through about eight iterations of lease agreements with Apple on this particular lease agreement, and negotiated pricing structures and how one line item affects another line item when you don't think it's going to, and then it does, and gone back and forth. And the extended warranty, that Apple Care piece, was about $60,000. And so just in talking with Val, I thought, if we look at what we have had to pay in repairs for the laptops that we currently have, it is not very much. And we are not taking a very big risk to save $60,000 off the top of this lease and take our chances at having to spend some money to repair batteries or keyboards or whatever it might be. And we still get some of the support, I mean, we can still call Apple Care for help with how-to-use programs and things like that. It just wouldn't cover the actual hardware. And so I feel really good about removing that piece actually from the lease, just to save some money. So in those eight iterations or so, we have gone in a range from where we're at right now. The 554 is the lowest number that we've seen. When I first looked at this, it was at exactly $150,000 per year. So I, you know, I think the number, I think it was around 567 was my first go-around with Apple. We went as high as 630 to get all of the things that I really wanted, and that $630,000 total cost came out to be about $161,000 per year for the four years, and then going through and saying, "Well, let's take that $60,000 off the top for the Apple Care and decide to cover that on our own." And then we removed also the Casper management piece and put it in the technology budget for the technology fees, for consulting fees, and then also for professional development to train our tech team, instead of leasing that and paying on the lease yearly for that, cover those upfront where they're actually going to happen. That brought our lease down to the 554 number and to the annual payment of 141,291. So I'm, actually, I feel really, really good about that, just a positive thought of going, "All right, we brought our annual down quite a bit in that." So that's the only update in the pricing structure, is taking out that Apple Care line item to get this down. And like I say, it was a couple of go-arounds with Apple, and you caught me last week, I was a little bit still in the negotiation process, and now I feel like we're at a very good place because of it, so.
Excellent. So this is an item for individual action, so prior to questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the lease of staff laptop computers and corresponding peripheral equipment, beginning with the 2017-18 school year, at a cost not to exceed $145,000 per year for four years? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions, comments? Noel?
Is this new hardware?
Yeah, brand new.
I asked a question regarding the hardware, as it might relate to the maintenance. If new hardware, is there some industrial experience on this hardware?
Not new hardware, it's new-to-us hardware, but not a brand-new product that's never been experienced. I think Mac laptops are in many schools.
Thank you.
Even with students, and we're not going there.
Noel?
So on the price quote, the Apple Care OS support, that's just to call in for software problems?
The Apple Care covers some call-in support, which actually, they throw in another line item, that they discount the whole thing and tell you it's $0, but it should cost you $5,000, because they provide some support.
cost you $5,000 because they, they provide some support with that. But the Apple Care line item is $183 per device to cover any sort of malfunction of the equipment. It would not cover accidental damage, so.
Yeah, that was weird because there's 4,796 and then it's zero.
Yeah, and then it goes to zero because they're giving us a really good deal.
Other questions or comments? Amy?
So, at the end of the lease, do you see completely bringing in another 350, you mean just turning everything over? Or if there are some computers still in good working order, would you keep some around? Or is that just too far in the future to figure out?
Pretty far in the future to know. I was looking back, trying to address your question from the last time, and I had a hard time with it actually about projecting out four years of a budget. I looked back a little bit to look at what we had done in the past couple of years that I've been here, and our capital budget has fluctuated, pretty, pretty large-scale fluctuation. In the first year that I was here, we replaced the, the math lab in the high school, and last year we took that lab apart and put them in staff, as staff computer replacements to save money on the staff computer replacement because the math department no longer needed it, but they did need a teaching space. And so, we removed it. And so, I thought, "It's very hard to pull out what the expenses are with staff computers and how long they're going to last or where they're going to move to in the district," and especially looking down the line for years. My goal would be to update every teacher machine at that point so that they stay fresh and new. And I don't know what we'll have in four years, but I imagine it will be different. I mean, the, the computers that are out right now as opposed to six months ago are already different. And you know what's going to happen in four years? I have no idea. But I would, I would like to update so that we stay at the front of it.
Excellent. Other questions or comments?
Could I comment real quick?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to commend Kim. She did a really great job thinking differently about the pieces of the lease and what the capital committee approved. And Apple, as you're aware, really has a pretty strong base in education, and they know it. And so, they like to play around with the amounts on their leases and the things that really weren't reasonable. And she called them out on it and really secured a great price for us. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thanks, Val.
So, I just, I just had, well, two comments. One to piggyback on Val. I was thinking the whole time you were talking about a tenacious negotiator you are, and maybe that's sort of your next professional development, um, skill set is you're negotiating because clearly you did an excellent job.
It's not my favorite one, Julie.
Which you're good at. And you obviously, you know, you went after it, and we really appreciate that. And, and I mean, I'm just so strongly supportive of this. I think we are incredibly fortunate to be able to do this. And Margaret, you expressed great excitement two meetings ago, and I concur. I just think this is, this is as exciting as iPads when we, when we went there with all our students. And I, I'm so excited. And again, I just think we are so incredibly fortunate to be here. And I think the stewardship that has led us to this point in being able to do this and, and for you, obviously, taking stewardship extremely seriously because every dollar counts here. And so, I'm extremely comfortable and absolutely excited about where we're moving forward. And we do have a huge thank you for what you've done, but as I said at the last meeting, what I know you will continue to do. This is an incredible undertaking. And you have, as I see, board members shaking their heads, you have incredible credibility with us, and we know that there is, it's a Herculean effort, absolutely, to, to transform all of this for our staff and the amount of questions and, and things. But we have great confidence that you would do that, and we're thanking you in advance for the amount of work we know that it will, that will take. That, that got us here to this point, and then will move us forward with, with this. So, it's really exciting.
Thank you. I, I will say also that those, the setup of each of the computers is in each of our elementary schools, the middle school and the high school right now. There's one setup, it should be somewhere over there, with a monitor, with a keyboard, with a mouse, so that everybody can see what they look like. And that has been a big help, I think, to staff, even just getting some questions via email going, "Could I do this? Could I do that? Will you provide adapters to us?" Yes, we will. You know, all of those pieces has been a really big help, too. And that's thanks to the, the people who are actually in those buildings on a regular basis to, to help with some of those questions and to help kind of guide people and to bring questions forward. So, I think that kind of effort is already underway.
Excellent. So, we have a motion and a second. So, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent.
Can I say one thing really?
Yes, absolutely. That's coming down to the official.
Again, I want to just reiterate the comments about Kim's leadership on this and the hard work. As proactive and as positive as I am, I, I wasn't ever sure we'd be able to do a lease like this. And the work that Kim has done with the tech steering committee and a number of staff to be able to get to this point is great. I think also, Kim, we should take this moment to recognize the technology team. Because if you think about it, when you go back to 2012, we had the same number of technicians as we had then with about 3,000 more devices. Now, it'll be even more than that. But you did not hear any concern about can the network handle it? Is the wireless in place and those things? And a lot of, that, that credit goes to Nate Knutson and the network team that Kim leads. You know, this proposal would not have come forward had Kim and Nate not said, "Okay, we know that the system can handle this and that we're in a good place." And that goes back to the great planning, you know, that Kim and Nate have done over the past several years to make sure that the infrastructure, the, the stuff that's not as exciting, the stuff behind the walls is ready to happen. And that has been a hallmark of our stewardship over the years is making sure that the stuff, I always, I tell Nate pretty regularly that no one pays attention to the network manager unless it's not working, right? And thankfully, with Nate, he really is, is progressive and proactive, and he and Kim work really, really well together to make sure that the system is set up to handle this piece. And we're just all very excited to be able to give this opportunity for our teaching staff to cut the cord and be mobile should they so choose and, and provide that flexibility for folks instructionally.
Excellent. Well, excellent.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Excellent. Okay. So, we will move on now to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table filed to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? So, moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Noel. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one item for information this evening, and that is the enrollment report. Dr. Hulman?
Yes, so you see a very similar enrollment report to what we had last month. But I want to just take a moment and go through a couple of things because last month, several people had pointed out some changes in some of the numbers. And so, I just really want to explain to you, what I'd really like you to do is to take a look at this particular part of the enrollment report to begin with, the spreadsheet-looking piece. The thing that I just want to make sure we go to and really focusing on is that the enrollment report is the number of students who are here, almost, we'll explain that in a moment, but it is not an ADM report.
Explain what ADM is.
So, an ADM is the average daily membership, and of course, that is how we generate the funding from the state. And of course, you know, not every student is weighted equally. So, I just, what I want to be really clear with the public is when they look at our enrollment report, it is not the same as the numbers that they would see if they were to pull the department's information from the website about how much money these students generate. Two pieces I want to point out. Number one is if you look under early childhood, you'll notice that during the year, from September 6th to April 3rd, we have seen a 50-student increase. And if we do the percentage, it's right about double what we had, you know, nearly 100% increase if you go back to, go back to September 6th. We've talked with you a number of times about how our early childhood and our early childhood special education is really bursting at the seams. Recently, this year, you approved some additional early childhood special education staff members to be able to address those ongoing needs. And you know that this is an area that we're trying to consider addressing as part of the master facilities plan. We'll be talking about that in greater detail at our work session on April 19th. But 50 of those student increases are in our early childhood. While we generate dollars for those students, it's not in the same way that we generate for, say, a first grader or a second grader. So, I just want to point that out to folks. Now, I want you to switch over to this sheet. And I want to point out at the, I'm sorry, that was the announcement sheet that you don't have.
This sheet.
What? This is why they don't use paper very often. If you look at the bottom left of the sheet and you look at where it talks about ALC 9 through 12, you see 82 students. But if you were to go over to the ALC tomorrow, you would really only see 44 bodies there because there are 44 students who are enrolled full-time in our ALC program. But we have 37 students who are enrolled in independent study. And I want to really point this out to you because this has to do with our independent study service. We use a, a piece of software called Odysseyware. And part of the Odysseyware component is that there needs to be a learning program process that students need to sign and complete, there's a process that they go through. And what happens is not every student fills that out in quite the timely fashion that we would like to. We're working on that to streamline that process so that it's not a piece of paper going home and coming back. We can now make that process online because we cannot count those students as independent study until we get that documentation back. This is why you saw a jump in one month with a number of independent studies. There's a number of factors at play, including a leave of absence through some, from someone who helps facilitate the collection of those forms. So, I just want to point out that those 37 independent study students are almost always going to be duplicate entry. Because most of those students, not all of them, but most of those students attend Northfield High School. We see a jump after the end of the first semester because students need to recover some credits of a class that maybe they failed during the first semester, now become independent study students. So, I just want us to be very careful about that 37 because those 37 students are almost always duplicate count. From time to time, because of the way that the law surrounds ALC enrollment, we may have a student who's enrolled in independent study from another school district. So, in that case, it's far fewer than our own high school students, but in that case, those students wouldn't be duplicate counted. But the large majority of those 37 students are already enrolled at our high school. Chris Nesset and I have looked at the enrollment report. We are considering some modifications to it to call those pieces out and give you what is the current K-12 number so that you're able to more easily identify how many students are in our K-12 system, or, and, and not including the independent study component of it. There are some tricks to that. In fact, as many of you know, Chris has worked in her position for a few years now, and she will tell you that there's been a number of iterations of the enrollment report. In fact, we may be going back to a strategy that had been previously used and intentionally discarded. So, but we have to evolve with the times, and we want to make sure that you can clearly look at the enrollment report and, "Okay, here are the kids who are in the traditional K-12 system. Here are the kids who are in the early childhood system that is really, really pressing us in terms of our facility space for early childhood, special education, early childhood, other early childhood, which we know from a number of Federal Reserve Bank studies about the return on investment that we have in early childhood." So, those are the key things that I just wanted to point out about the enrollment report. And since we had a little bit of a lesser agenda tonight, I felt I could indulge and take a few minutes just to be, hopefully, I've been very clear about what the enrollment report is and what it is not. Because Val is always happy if I make it very clear that it's not an ADM report or an average daily membership report. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can at this time if you have them. Hopefully, I've been clear. I won't give you a formative assessment to check your understanding at this point, but certainly would be willing to engage in a discussion about it.
Questions? Amy?
I have a question about the ECFE numbers. So, whoever could answer. So, are those done by class? So, that's how many students are in each class? Or?
So, you go ahead. Let's be real clear, this is not early childhood family education.
Oh, I see.
This is typically early childhood special education or preschool.
Okay, also, Amy, not, these are not general education numbers reflected in these class sizes. So, these are, some of these numbers would be birth to three, so they are receiving home visiting instead of necessarily at hand-in-hand preschool. Then some of these are in our integrated preschool program. So, if we have a class of 18, we're talking about six to eight students that are special ed students in that class and the rest of the class being made up of gen ed students. So, these don't reflect necessarily a class size. They reflect either a birth to three number or they reflect students that are special ed students within a preschool classroom.
I'm glad I asked.
Okay, thank you. Good question.
Ellen?
So, I really would love it if, if the comments you were talking about of making this so that it's a tool that we can use in, in thinking about how Val has said that our financial situation is first and foremost because of her stewardship and Dr. Hulman's stewardship and, and Dr. Richardson's before that and everyone's. But the second piece is that we've had this increase in enrollment and that you, you've talked about Val, that, you know, we can't, we don't know what the future will hold with the enrollment. So, as board members, you know, we need to kind of watch this as one of our tools. And if it's a tool that's kind of muddy, it's harder to use. So, I, I would love it if, if that was called out.
Yeah, we're going to try to redesign it, not too terribly much because there's some good information out. But what I think what we're looking at is how can we strategically, in the summary section, share with you, you know, how are, you know, what are the students that generate, you know, the general ed K-12 dollars? And, and just to try to make it a little bit more simple for you to read and not have to do math in your head, which I know you can all do, but I think it's just much easier and more transparent if we're able to call those pieces out individually.
Noel?
This is a sidebar to the, to the early childhood, but it may be an appropriate time. In my mind, there's, there's two reasons that early child is important. One is it sets the stage, good, good early childhood, sets the stage for more learning. But it also has got a financial impact. Have I said enough to be able to, for you to be able to respond to that?
Yes, in fact, Erin's not going to want me to quote the number she and I did today, but I'm going to probably do it anyway. Or do you have a different number? No, no. Okay. So, one of the pieces, if you, if you have followed early childhood news, which we happen to do so, you know that Art Rolnik, who was, I think he was the vice president at the Minneapolis Federal Reserve Bank for many, many years, one of the pieces he did is he looked at the economic impact of, and a term that business really likes to see, which is return on investment. And so, the number that Erin and I have, which I know it's been updated since, but the, the number that we understand, Mr. Rolnik, Dr. Rolnik has shared with over the years is that for every dollar spent on early childhood, there's a $7 return on the investment. And so, the key thing is that what we know is the earlier that we can intervene, and especially with the numbers here about early childhood special education, the earlier that we can help intervene with a disability and help create the skills to work through that. In many cases, students who are in early childhood education often are categorized with what's called developmental delay. That's the general category. As a former pre-K2 principal, some of my favorite days were IEP meetings, or Individual Education Plan meetings with first-grade parents when the kid was typically turning seven in the spring of their first grade or sometime that might be early in second grade, where those students, because they had gotten services from the time they were three or four, the way that their development had changed was such that they no longer qualified for special education. And those are some of the most joyous meetings that I've ever had a chance to attend in my career because the system did exactly what it's supposed to be. You'll see a number of people who are going to do home visits and helping parents work with their children to address the disability, the developmental delay that has become apparent to them through, and caught through early childhood screening. So, there's a significant economic impact, but it's even more than that. Because if we can help a child develop to the point where they no longer need special education services, that's a very positive thing, you know, for their family and for them as a learner.
And our early childhood is?
Our early childhood right now is, it's put in a couple of different places. So, we have some of our preschool and some of our early childhood family ed programming is at NCRC. And then we also have the bulk of it in our early childhood special education that runs out of Longfellow School. And I will be coming to you in the next couple of meetings talking about the fact that we are out of space at Longfellow. And in fact, we have been looking at bringing you a term that you've not heard in some time, portable. Or we're also looking at potentially leasing some space elsewhere in the community to address the needs that we have in early childhood special education. So, we haven't decided on a strategy yet, but we know we're out of space. We know we are going to most likely need additional space next year. And so, trying to determine what's the best way to add space in the most cost-effective way while we finalize our master facilities plan approach is going to be the key thing. So, if you open the door, Noel, and I'm giving you, as Dr. Richardson used to say, a teaser about what's coming down the line.
I just want to clarify, I think you're envisioning the portable for offices.
Yeah, what we've been looking at, that's exactly right. Because one of the ways that we could recapture some space at Longfellow would be to basically we could recapture some space at Longfellow would be to basically remove some folks from a shared office space, which is important. People need a place to, you know, to do some of this work. Recapture that inside the building as a classroom, and then have the folks who office, who need an office space, have a small portable on the property. We're looking at that. Right now, we're not sure that that's going to be the most cost-effective option. We are also looking at the potential of, is there a place for us to maybe lease some early childhood spaces and some programming within the community? That's another option. That may be the most cost-effective option. We've only had one meeting. We have another meeting scheduled later this week, but what we know is that there is nowhere else to put a student at Longfellow. And we had a meeting last week with a number of stakeholders, and I think they became annoyed with me in terms of my asking, what about this room? Could this be? Because it's my job to continue to ask those questions, why can't we do this? And I have become satisfied in terms of the fact that there is no place else to go. And part of that is that at Longfellow, there are some rules that restrict us. You cannot have early childhood students on the second floor, you know, in terms of there's not even a place to recapture any place of some of the offices that are on the second floor. The law doesn't allow us to have, and it wouldn't be a good idea, anyway. But my point is, it's our job as good stewards to make sure we keep asking the questions, okay, why can't we do that? And until the point where my annoying questions have all been answered to the best of Erin and Cheryl's ability. And Jim Colseth is right there with me, trying to brainstorm and plan and those kinds of pieces. So, the numbers that you see, the 50 additional early childhood special education students, not all of them come to Longfellow, we've got to be clear about that.
Correct, not all of them do. Some of them are being serviced in birth to three-years-old, and so, that's happening somewhere else, either home or in the community.
And what we know is the students that we have already identified as coming next fall, Director of Student Services, Special Services Cheryl Hall will tell you is the largest number that she's seen in her time in Northfield.
We know we are, right now, 50% higher than we were last October, when we start the fall next year.
And this is a good thing. It's actually a very good thing.
Is that due to just better diagnostics? Or truly, are we seeing a rise in special?
Well, now, we're getting into Cheryl's area a little bit more than mine.
We'll save that for another day, then.
She might be better able to answer.
Okay, okay. Jeff, you had a question?
Well, within all of these facility needs, do the proposals of what you want to do at Greenville, rectify those, pretty much?
The, we've done some analysis in terms of that we would probably be able to come close to doubling our ability to handle students in terms of the programming. And one of the pieces that is a strength, and when we worked together at the work session on the 19th, one of the strengths of the elementary project that would repurpose Greenville Park as an early childhood center, and again, thinking about the return on investment that the Minneapolis Federal Reserve has shared, be able to increase that significantly. Not only is it an increase in the services, but it's also an ability to increase what is called wraparound services. So, when we get away from early childhood special education, we start to think about preschool and those pieces. One of the key things is to make sure that we can also provide onsite daycare, or a one-stop transportation piece, or those other kinds of things. And having a single point of entry for our early childhood programming that not only would return many dollars on the investment, not necessarily directly to us, you know, but to the economy overall, as researchers have shown, it will also provide us the ability to make sure that kids have that really quality preschool experience before they enter the K-12 system, which we think is a real important step, and it's something we've worked very closely with Northfield Promise on trying to address. So, the proposal that you're considering for an elementary project that would repurpose the current Greenville Park Elementary School as an early childhood center would go a long way in addressing these space needs. So, thanks for the opportunity for me to share that particular piece.
Now, this was a great timely discussion when we were looking at the numbers, you know, the numbers here, and then being able to hear the background is really good. So, if there's not any other additional questions on the enrollment report, we'll move on to just an update on future meetings.
Don't we have to do the grant request?
That's what's consented.
Part of the consent.
Oh, okay. That was all consented. But thank you for clarifying that. So, future meetings, school board work session, Wednesday, April 19th, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. here in the High School Media Center, followed by regular school board meetings, Monday, April 24th and Monday, May 8th, both at 7:00 p.m. in the High School Media Center. So, with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn, moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.